I told you, I picked the worst of the worst just for you.
Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Wednesday, March 22th Board of Sedgwick County Commission. Appreciate everybody that's watching on KPTS and our YouTube channel, and welcome all that are here present today. So with that, we'll call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk?
Invocation to be led by Rabbi Shmulek Greenberg, please remain standing for the flag salute.
Almighty God, I invoke your blessing today upon the legislative leaders gathered here as they prepare to resume their work on behalf of the citizens of this great county. We ask your divine blessing for all of their constituents wherever they may be. Gathered here in a chamber of elected leadership, in our prayer, let us recall the preeminent leader, the biblical Moses. As the contemporary spiritual leader, the Rebbe Rabbi Menachem M. Schnirson of righteous memory explained, Moses was not merely a leader who set guidelines and imparted knowledge to his people, but he also had the unique gift of being able to reveal every individual's inherent potential. Almighty God, please bestow the wisdom upon the elected leaders gathered here today to legislate laws that are not only just and compassionate, but ones that enable all citizens of Sedgwick County of all ages, backgrounds, and cultures the ability to achieve their true potentials. Please invoke your blessings upon the county board of commissioners as they follow the American tradition of four decades established by U.S. Congress and presidents to mark the 121st birthday of the great spiritual leader, the Rebbe on April 2nd, 2023, as Education and Sharing Day USA here in the great Sedgwick County, a day upon which to recall that education must go beyond the acquisition of knowledge, but must also focus on building moral character. Please give them the inspiration and humility to unite across all divides in the pursuit of just, meaningful, and moral society, as was outlined in your seven universal laws you gave to Noah and his descendants after the Great Flood, one of which, the command to govern by just laws, is the purpose of their gathering today. May it be your will, God Almighty, that the tireless efforts of the commissioners in these directions be successful, empowering all the individuals in this great county to be decent human beings, considerate of others, reverent of you, and ready to do their bit toward the ultimate goal of a perfect world in which your presence will be manifest. Amen.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Lopez, Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Beatty.
Present.
Commissioner Howe.
Present.
Chairman Meitzner.
Present. Next item, please.
County announcements.
Good morning, Nicole.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. I am Nicole Gibbs of the Strategic Communications Department. Okay, so Sedgwick County Fire District One will be implementing the state of Kansas imposed burn ban during the month of April. The ban includes all open burning of any waste, including vegetation and wood waste, structures, or other material on any premises. Open burns can resume after May 1st, 2023. For questions regarding the burn ban or fire safety in general, please contact the Sedgwick County Fire Marshal at 660-3473. Throughout March, Strategic Communications, in partnership with our DEI fellow, have been highlighting the Developmental Disabilities Office and some Sedgwick County employees on our social media feeds in honor of Developmental Disability Awareness Month. The team has compiled a video of highlighting our employees for you to see.
Hi, I'm Ashley Thompson, and I work at the Sedgwick County Treasurer's Office. I process vehicle tags on the internet.
Individuals with developmental disabilities certainly can work. They're just like everyone else. They have a variety of skills and abilities. That doesn't necessarily mean they can't do the job. And sometimes giving them the opportunity to prove themselves is all you need to find that employee that will stick with you and be a great employee.
Ashley has been with us now for a little over eight years. She came from Project Search and did an internship with us.
The students go to work from nine until two o'clock, and then in the afternoon, we do journaling and we do a math class.
Is to keep me busy and see plans out my work.
We hired her on, and she has been such a blessing. She has just grown incredibly, and we're so proud. We're so very proud of her and very proud of Project Search.
I'm Noah Gray. I work in Sedgwick County as a custodian. Keeps me busy. I'm never really standing around.
All the kids from Project Search, every time they've come in here, they've brought something special. You know, they don't hesitate when you throw work at them. They'll go, oh, no, not this again, and just jump right on and do it.
My name is Montez Miles. I work here in the print shop. I have been working here about four, five years. My coworkers is the best part. I really enjoy working with them. They're really good people.
We've enjoyed his growth since he's been here professionally, socially. It's been good all the way around.
The more types of people we see in the community, the better people accept and understand that even people with disabilities can be productive and a great member of society.
Hey, Nicole, that was really nice. And I think all of us have, we've run into Ashley off and on, and it's really great to feature her, and I know we've all run into Noah. So the other ones, I don't know personally, but it's really a great thing.
It's been a really rewarding month for us to learn about these people and all that they do and the Developmental Disabilities Office. So special thanks to those that participated, and we will be continuing our uplifting diversity and equity inclusion stories throughout the year.
Thank you. And Commissioner Dennis has a comment?
First of all, Nicole. Nicole, thank you very much for what Communications does, not only with this project, with every project. You do a very professional and fantastic job. But I truly appreciate the CDDO that you just produced. You know that that's one of our legislative agendas, and it's one that I talk about every time that I have an opportunity, is it takes seven to 10 years to get any individual that has some kind of an ADD issue to even start getting services from the state of Kansas. That's unacceptable. That's why I keep pushing that each and every time that I have an opportunity. Normally, we don't talk during your introduction, but it's so important that we get the word out to let your legislators know that this is a priority for the state of Kansas, and we need to start reducing that backlog of people that aren't getting services today. So I thank you again for producing that film and letting people know how valuable they are to our community. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay, for Sedgwick County, good news. I have Greg Gann here from our IT department. He has been appointed to the Information Technology Council by Governor Laura Kelly. He also brought his certificate of appointment, which we thought was pretty neat to share. So this council is composed of 17 members, and Greg is the representative for county government. If you'd like, Greg, to say a few words about the council, that'd be great.
Morning, Greg, and congratulations.
Thank you. Good morning, Greg Gann, Sedgwick County IT. It's an honor and a privilege to serve on behalf of Sedgwick County and of the 105 counties across Kansas. The Information Technology Executive Council sets policy for information technology across the state for all the state agencies, and it's critically important for the voice of counties to be included in that in my role. I've established a number of great relationships with our partner counties across Kansas. There's a great opportunity for us to collaborate, to partner, and to play a strong role in the crafting of policies that will eventually affect us in one way or another. So it's a great honor to serve on behalf of Sedgwick County.
Okay. Thank you, and congratulations again.
Thank you.
IT is on a roll today because also they have been participating. Our IT infrastructure team has recently partnered with CISA, Cyber Security and Infrastructure Security Agency, which is Division of Homeland Security, to conduct a risk and vulnerability assessment. This assessment is a resource that's available for all public organizations. This assessment is a, sorry, four staff from CISA conducted an external and internal infiltration test with a phishing campaign to simulate a real-world attack. CISA staff then came on site and worked with IT offices all last week and provided a briefing to both Sedgwick County IT and District Court IT on Friday. Their tailored risk analysis report will be received within 10 business days. We bring this up because it's important to honor our IT and recognize the great work that they do to keep our system safe. So thank you, IT, for all your work. And Mike Elbers is here to answer any questions that I cannot explain. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Okay. Thanks, Nicole. And I'll keep my comments, not, I won't not try to be humorous about IT this time. That last one went over like a dead balloon, so congratulations to y'all. So thank you. Oh, Commissioner Howe?
No, I just want to say thank you as well. This is one of those areas where I think we really depend on the brilliance of our staff to keep us safe. There are communities, even here in Sedgwick County, that have actually clicked on the wrong thing and took them to their knees for weeks. And I think you know who I'm talking about, but it's such an easy mistake to make, and you guys have done a tremendous job of protecting us. And I know that every single day there are threats, there are things that are risky that you guys just take care of that for us, and we have a robust system that does important work on behalf of the people. But those threats are taken away from us very thoughtfully by a very brilliant staff. So thank you for your great work on this area. That's all I'll say.
Okay. Any other comments? Don't see any? So thank you again, Nicole.
You're welcome.
Next item, please.
Public agenda.
Commissioners, we did not receive any emails from the 5:00 deadline yesterday. We do have a few people signed up for public comment, but I don't know if they would rather talk during the agenda item or want to address us now. Agenda item, and then Mandy and Tanya, are you here? Yep. Do you want to talk during the agenda item, or do you want to address us right now? The agenda item related to childcare? Oh, okay. Right. So anybody else want to speak to address the commission while we're under the public agenda? I don't see any, so Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Proclamations, item A, proclamation declaring education and sharing day.
Commissioners, we're gonna, we've talked to the pro tem, and based on this great proclamation, we're asking a guest, Doug Kudlec, to read the proclamation for us and present it as well. So Doug, welcome to the meeting, and thank you for doing this for us.
Proclamation of Sedgwick County, Kansas. Whereas the basis for the continuity of any society is education, and in Sedgwick County, the education of our youth is a priority. In order to achieve its highest goals, education must form and strengthen moral character by imparting moral and ethical values that have been the bedrock of society since the dawn of civilization. And whereas a global spiritual leader and leading advocate for the advancement of education, the Lubavitcher Rebbe Rabbi Menachem M. Schnirson stressed that a moral and ethical education empowers every individual to develop their full potential in making the world a better place. And whereas such an education can nurture the unity of diverse peoples through the encouraging increased acts of goodness and kindness imbued with the awareness of even a single positive act of an individual can make a major impact in the world and usher in an era of global peace, when there will be peace within your walls, serenity within your mansions, Psalm 122. And whereas education and sharing day is observed each year on the Rebbe's birthday in recognition of his outstanding and lasting contributions towards the improvement of education, morality, and acts of charity around the world. And whereas this year has an added significance as the year of Hakel, a biblical event of unity, education, and spiritual growth emphasizing how every person is crucial to perfecting the world. Now therefore, let it be resolved that I, Chairman Peter F. Meitzner, and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim April 2nd, 2023 as Education and Sharing Day in Sedgwick County, and call upon everyone to work together to create a better, brighter, and promising future for all.
Thank you. And here, I'll make a motion that we, Commissioner Howe?
No, I just want to say to Doug Kudlec, thank you for reading that. And Rabbi, thank you for your prayer this morning, the invocation, and I think this is an excellent proclamation. Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion, we would adopt the proclamation.
And I will second that. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. And here to receive, to receive the proclamation is Rabbi Greensberg, and so thank you again for being here.
Well, thank you very much. As stated in the proclamation, the Rebbe many times mentioned the concept of education not just in the academic field, but rather, as we say in Yiddish, how to treat people to be a mensch. And the true way of teaching our children, in our society, how to be a good person is through being a role model. So I would like to thank the county commissioner and all the people of Sedgwick County for really showing true leadership, and thank you again. And it's great to be a part of this great county and part of the wonderful people here, and I hope that we're able to continue and uplift everyone in the entire county. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And it's ironic, and Doug, thanks for being here. Doug's also a professor at, or at Education.
Well, he is, so I've known Doug a long time. He's proficient in many languages, but he's a scholar of the Hebrew language. I think he studied it for five years, and he actually teaches Hebrew. So he's had a tremendous connection to the Hebrew culture and language, and so thank you, Doug, for bringing that to us today.
Quick picture. Okay. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Appointments, item B, resolution appointing Lexi Michael to the Wichita-Sedgwick County Food and Farm Council.
Mr. Papoon.
Mr. Chairman, Mike Papoon, County Counselor. It's the will of the board, we can take the appointments under items B and C together. Both of these appointments are to our newly created, along with the City of Wichita's Food and Farm Council. Food and Farm Council was created to help coordinate community-wide efforts to improve access affordability, stability, and availability of local culturally appropriate and nutritionally adequate food for all. The county commission has seven appointments to this board, five of them upon the recommendation of an individual county commissioner. Two of them are at large positions, and the City of Wichita also has seven appointments to this board. There are several categories which this board strives to appoint people from, like rural food producers, rural food retailers, natural resource, conservation organizations, and such. And both of the appointments this morning fall under one of these niche groups. The first appointment is Lexi Michael on the recommendation of the chairman, Commissioner Meitzner. And the second appointment is appointment by Commissioner Jim Howe of Doug Kudlec to this board. Resolutions are in proper format, so you approve the resolutions.
Okay. Thank you. They both are here also, but I'll make a motion that we approve these, both of them.
I'll second that. I'll have comments after. Thank you.
Motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. And we have, the first one is Lexi Michael. She actually runs the new school across there, the niche school, yes, the WSU Tech, and Lexi's a great asset for the college and running that school there, the culinary school. And so I can't be more proud than to have you as my nominee to be on this board, so thank you. You'll be sworn in? Yeah, good morning.
If you'll raise your right hand, please. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of my office of Wichita-Sedgwick County Food and Farm Council. So help me God. I do. Very good.
Okay, thank you. Any comments, Lexi?
Hello there.
Good morning.
I just wanted to say thank you to Chairman Commissioner Meitzner for the appointment and for the nomination, and I really look forward to helping with the success of our food system. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Commissioner Howe?
Well, Mr. Chairman, thank you for the chance to speak, and I'll call up Doug Kudlec to be sworn in, but I have a comment afterwards. It's, go ahead, and if you do your oath now, that'd be great.
Are you making comments on swearing? Oh, sorry. You're the right. Could've done both of them at the same time. Okay. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of my office of Wichita-Sedgwick County Food and Farm Council. So help me God.
Aye, affirm.
Very good. You'll sign there.
So let me talk about Doug for just a minute. So not only is he fluent in many languages, especially Hebrew and Greek, he's a professor, he teaches languages to others that are interested in that. He's also a missionary that goes around the world and helps people in places like Romania, and he teaches over there in other languages, and so it's incredible what he does. I have known Doug a very long time, but the reason he's on the Food and Farm Council is because when he's not teaching, he's not talking about other languages and traveling around the world, he spends literally every moment he has, every opportunity, growing enormous amounts of food. And I don't think he's a farmer technically, but you know a lot about growing food. And the fact of the matter is, the Food and Farm Council, one of the focuses on that is people showing some individual responsibility and opportunity to grow their own food. And so I think his perspective on this is tremendous, and so I think you're a great appointment, and I appreciate the fact that you'd be willing to accept this nomination today.
I am not a farmer, but I am the grandson of a farmer. My grandfather farmed up near, just south of the town of Sedgwick back in the 1930s. And so, and I learned gardening from him when I was about 11 years old, and so I've been gardening for almost 60 years. In the past, I have raised enough to sell to some food outlets and such, and I used to write a column for the Hayesville Sun-Times on gardening and ecology and nature, so I have a great interest in this area and hope that I can make a contribution.
Thank you, Doug. Okay. I don't see any other comments. Thank you, everybody. Next item, please.
Item D, resolution reappointing Dr. Michelle Van to the Sedgwick County Mental Health Advisory Board.
Mr. Papoon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mike Papoon, County Counselor. This is the Sedgwick County Mental Health Advisory Board appointment. This board makes recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners regarding, among other things, adoption of the annual plan and budget for mental health programs, and they help evaluate mental health programs and services in the county. Each commissioner gets three recommended appointments to this board. It's a 15-member board. This is the reappointment of Dr. Michelle Van upon the recommendation of Commissioner Beatty. The resolution's in proper form, so you approve the resolution.
Okay. Commissioner Beatty?
Thank you, Chairman. Dr. Van, we haven't had a chance to work together much yet, but this is a reappointment because of what our community says about you and your work, and what the people that are on this board have said about your contribution. So I'm thankful. I understand that a lot of times these advisory boards are a big commitment for people, and your willingness to serve in this capacity, it just speaks volumes to your commitment to people, but also the way you treat people and the way you value people, and that's your reputation in this community, and I'm just grateful that you're willing to be one of my representatives on this board. So thank you for doing this, thank you for being here this morning, and I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Dr. Michelle Vaughn to the Sedgwick County Mental Health Advisory Board.
Second. Just a motion in a second. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Motion carries.
Good morning. If you'll raise your right hand, please. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of my office of Sedgwick County Mental Health Advisory Board. So help me God. Very good. If you'd like to make comments, then I need you to sign.
Thank you, Commissioner Beatty. I appreciate the opportunity to be reappointed. It has been a great opportunity for our community and for us to be able to represent on this particular board, and so I thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item E, resolution reappointing Deborah Jo Miller to the Sedgwick County Animal Care Advisory Board.
And Mr. Papoon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mike Papoon, County Counselor, again. We can take, if it's the will of the board, items E, F, and G altogether, all three involved the Sedgwick County Animal Care Advisory Board. This is a 10-member board that looks at policies and procedures for operation of the Sedgwick County Animal Control Department. It's a 10-member board. Each county commissioner gets two appointments to this board. All three appointments are reappointments today, two reappointments by the chairman, Commissioner Meitzner, and one reappointment by Commissioner Dennis. First of all, Commissioner Dennis is recommending the reappointment of Deborah Jo Miller to this board. Commissioner Meitzner is recommending the reappointment of Susan Erlinwine and Shelley Duncan to this board. All three resolutions are in proper format, so you approve the resolutions.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. And I appreciate the people that are volunteering to serve on our boards. That is a sacrifice of their time and efforts, but the advisory boards that we have are very valuable to the county commission and to the county. So I am very happy that Deborah Jo Miller has accepted the reappointment, and I am happy to make the motion to approve all three of these individuals.
And I will second that. So motion in a second to approve all three to the Animal Care Advisory Board. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Aye. Motion carries. Are any of them here to be sworn in? I don't see so. Okay. All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
New Business, Item H, DER 2022-0000, Amendment to the Wichita Cedric County Unified Zoning Code Regarding Home Occupation Daycares.
Good morning, Scott Wadel.
Good morning. All right. Well, good morning, Scott Wadel from the Planning Department. Thank you for the opportunity to present on this item. So this item is for you to consider an update to the zoning code, and the recommended actions are to adopt the findings of the Planning Commission, to approve the changes to the zoning code regarding home occupation daycares, and authorize signature of the resolution and publication. There have been multiple reports and articles on the status of daycare in Cedric County and Wichita. The headlines have indicated there's a two-year wait for childcare in our community. They've also shared information about the challenges this presents for both families and our economy. And the zoning code is related to daycares, and this update is proposed in order to help address some of those challenges. The zoning code regulates where and how daycares can be operated. In the zoning code, there are two classifications of daycares, general and limited. The zoning code allows for both types of daycares to be located in a home as a home occupation. However, there are processes that differ for each of these. And for context, the City of Wichita license information indicates there are 229 home occupations currently in the City of Wichita, again, just for the city. In terms of daycare limited in the zoning code, this allows for supervision of up to 10 individuals or pupils, and that is the number that we're focusing on because the update, proposed update would change that. It's important to note that in the zoning code, there is a category we define if you're operating a business out of your house, it's known as a home occupation. The zoning code recognizes and acknowledges that home occupations, there's a balance between the property use of that individual's property for a business and also the effects of neighboring properties. And the thing that I would share with you is that this balance has been considered during the deliberation of these changes, and multiple organizations are recommending approval of these changes. In terms of effects of the current code, so the Unified Zoning Code allows for daycare limited in most zoning districts, and that includes residential zoning districts. Daycare general, however, requires a conditional use in most zoning, residential zoning districts. And because of that, many of the daycares that we see are operated, when their home occupation daycares are operated, it's daycare limited, and so has that 10-child limit associated with it. In addition, for SF5 and SF10, and these are not very common in the unincorporated county, but they are very common in the City of Wichita, when it comes to employees, home occupation daycares operating in these two zoning districts are limited to just one employee, and they are able to have a substitute, but generally just one employee. And that's important because that's what's in the current regulations, and the proposed changes would update that so that there could be two employees. So, as I've highlighted or hinted at, the proposed changes, what they would do is simply allow for up to 12 pupils or students, depending on if it's a daycare or art instruction that's taking place as part of the home occupation, that allow up to 12 of those, 12 students, and then up to two employees at one time. Oh, it's important to note also that KDHE regulations would still apply. So, this relaxes the regulations on how many children can be at the home occupation daycare. However, KDHE regulations may constrain that to a lower number than what is authorized by the zoning code. So, just to highlight that that supersedes the zoning code. In terms of review, this has been taken to the MAPC Advanced Plans, which is Subcommittee of the Planning Commission. It's been taken to the full Planning Commission and also to the City Council, and all of those organizations have recommended adoption of these changes to the zoning code. So, the recommended action is, again, to adopt the findings of the Planning Commission, approve the changes, and authorize the resolution and publication. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Okay. Any questions? I think this is a good move by the Planning Commission. I don't see, I don't see any questions from the bench here, but I do, I think Tony Porter has signed up to address us on this issue. Tony, if you'd like to come up. Name and address.
Thank you for having me, Chairman Meitzner, County Commissioners. I'm Tony Porter, Vice President of Government Relations with the Wichita Regional Chamber of Commerce. I'm here to speak in support of the proposed changes to the Unified Zoning Code Regarding Home Occupation Daycares. We all know from having children ourselves, or as employers in the business community, access to childcare is vital to the workforce. That's why expanding access to affordable, high-quality, and safe childcare options is an important workforce development issue to Wichita, Cedric County, and the region. It's also why it's included on both the chambers and Cedric County's legislative agendas, as well as combined joint agendas supported by our community partners. We are also grateful to our state legislators who are working on the issue in Topeka today, I just heard. We support this amendment because we believe by making additional childcare spaces available, more parents will be able to re-enter the workforce. The Wichita Regional Chamber encourages the Commission to adopt the findings of the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission and approve the changes to the Unified Zoning Code Regarding Home Occupation Daycares. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Tony. I appreciate your comments. We also had, is Mandy Waugh or Tanya Bullock went to address us on this issue? Well, you signed up, so you're more than welcome to say a few words. Name and address and head.
I'll never turn this subject down. So, this is, we know it's an issue, and this is probably the quickest and easiest fix for us to do. It's already approved through KDHE and across the state, and it can help even a family who has two children, but maybe their child is six years old, and they're in school, and in the summertime, they don't have to worry about where their other child is going. So, it really is a safe and easy choice, and we appreciate you hearing us out all this time. I feel like we've been doing this for quite some time now, and the process, though, has been really rewarding, so thank you.
Good. Well, the speed of government sometimes then goes fast. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. And I'm definitely in support of this and will vote for it when it comes to the vote, but I do want to challenge our county to go one step further, and the manager's not going to be surprised by what I have to say, because I've told him several times that this is one of my things that I'm interested in. Workforce is critical, and if we don't have the workforce, we can't do the jobs, especially at the county level, where our job is to support the community. And our job as county, we work 24/7, 365, and finding adequate daycare for people that work in 911, in corrections, in fire department, sheriff's office, all of the different EMS, the different 24/7 operations that we have, we have to have adequate workforce to be able to do that. So, we need to start looking at developing 24/7, 365 daycare for our community, for the organizations that operate that way. And I've challenged the manager to work with the city manager to see if we can find some way that we can partner with the city, because they have the same issues that we do. And then there are other organizations like hospitals and so forth that also have these exact same issues. So, I think if the community came together, we could start trying to find a way that we could help our workforce and at the same time help young parents. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you for your comments, and I think we have another Commissioner that's an expert in this area.
I don't know if I would say an expert, but thank you, Chairman. Scott, thank you so much for being here, and thank you all for being here to talk on the subject as well. It's extremely important. I fortunately don't need daycare at the moment, but I did start looking into it to see what realistically it would take to get twins into daycare right now, and it's a tough feat. I mean, I don't know if I had to have daycare, if I would have it available, and what does that mean for so many parents who want to get back into the workforce, just like you were saying, it's just such a hard, a hard thing to do. So, appreciate the work you're doing on this. This will open it up for so many more kids to be able to be seen, and I want to give a quick shout-out to Councilmember Tuttle. I know she's done a lot of work on this, and she wanted to be here today, but wasn't able to make it, so appreciate that, and just thank you guys for the work that you're doing. This will impact so many families in our community, and I just can't thank you guys enough for that.
Very good comments. Commissioner Howe?
Well, thank you, Chairman. I am very much in support of the resolution. It gets us lined up with the State of Kansas, which I just think is common sense here. In fact, I would like to, now that I know that we can be more restrictive than the state, it makes me think, where else are we doing that type of thing? So now I'll expand my thinking to where else are we creating restrictions that may be not necessary? And so, I'm glad this is before us today, that we can certainly make this move that will certainly create quite a few more opportunities for placements of these kids that have no place to go. So we need to have this resource available in the community. To Commissioner Dennis's point, I guess, I know it's early in the discussion, and I'm not asking for an answer right now, but I guess I'd like to have someone come back and let us know if Cedric County or Wichita, to do this together or separately, you know, what, how many, how many children are in that pool, and what would be the, how many staff would it take to care for that many kids, and kind of early, kind of early cost? I'm afraid we're probably talking millions of dollars potentially, but I don't know that, so I guess I'd like to know, before we get to conversation too, I don't want someone to think this is something that's close, we're not close at all, we are just having a conversation. But before we get too far down that path, I'd like to know what are we talking about? So, manager, staff, if you don't mind, can we at least get some preliminary information, and that would be really helpful. And I'm not an expert, but I am a grandpa, and I've got number six on the way here, number six will be here in May, and all my, all my grandbabies, they all have daycare, and so I know some of my young, my kids are in a stage of life, they're trying to get a house, trying to get a car, and trying to save for their future, for their retirements, or for their education, for their kids, and you add in the cost of daycare, it is shocking. I'm watching this, and I'm wondering, how in the world do they make ends meet? How's their budget actually work? It seems almost impossible. So, you know, affordable daycare that you trust, that you can, you can walk away and leave your child in, in an area that you believe they're going to be safe and secure, and come back at the end of the day and pick them up. To find that place and something you can afford when you're making, you know, $15 an hour, $20 an hour, whatever it is, that's very hard to do. And so I do understand the problem, I'm certainly not an expert, but this is a workforce issue, which is, again, I appreciate Tony being here today. So certainly a workforce issue, it's a pipeline issue, and I think this is a step in the right direction. Thank you for bringing this to us today. Thank you, Chairman.
Don't see any other comments. Motion to approve. Second. There's a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you again for being here. Madam Clerk, next item?
Item I, Appoint a County Engineer/Director for Public Works.
Sheena Schmutz. Good morning, thank you for being here.
Good morning, Sheena Schmutz, Chief Human Resources Officer. We are here today to formally appoint Lynn Packer as our next County Engineer and Director of Public Works. Lynn has over 23 years of experience with the county, and we are excited to formally place him in this position. Lynn is with us today, if you would like to join us and make a few comments.
Good morning, Lynn.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Thank you very much for this appointment. I'm honored to be here today and to accept this appointment, and I very much appreciate the confidence you showed in me to lead the Division of Public Works.
Okay. Well, let's hope we get enough votes to get you appointed, so I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve.
I suppose I'll second.
Motion in a second. Any other comments at this time? No?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say, I think Lynn's done a great job, and I know that he's certainly qualified to do this, and I've heard his team over at Public Works has expressed confidence in his leadership, and I appreciate them speaking up as well. And so I think we're going to be in good hands. The shoes to fill of Jim Weber are going to be nearly impossible, but I think you have a good start, so I think you're the right choice. I'm glad to vote for him today. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. And Lynn, I want to express my appreciation, knowing you and how you, you and your staff work closely with City Wichita on mutual projects, work closely with KDOT on projects, work closely and help guide the townships and the other cities that are within Cedric County. So, that's very, very valuable, that we have that teamwork approach, and you're a leader in that, and that's much appreciated. So, I will make a motion that we approve the Public Works Director as presented. Okay. Oh, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Congratulations, Lynn, thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item J, Memorandum of Understanding Between Kansas Department for Aging and Disability Services and Cedric County for Construction of a State Psychiatric Hospital.
Okay. Good morning, Justin.
Good morning, Commissioners. Justin Waggoner, Deputy County Counselor. I'm here to present something I know we talked about at a Board of County Commissioners Staff meeting a few weeks back in some detail. Just for background, the State of Kansas operates state psychiatric hospitals in both Osawatomie and Larned, but there's long been a need for state psychiatric hospital services and competency evaluation and restoration services in South Central Kansas. As you all know, the location of such a state psychiatric hospital within South Central Kansas is specifically listed as a priority on Cedric County's legislative platform for 2023. Concerns have been expressed by a multitude of folks, including our District Attorney Mark Bennett, Sheriff Easter, defense attorneys, about folks waiting on competency evaluations to be completed at the state level. Those folks often will wait several months at the Cedric County Jail while those are pending. So there's, there's been a demonstrated need for this. There's also been two special committees appointed by the state legislature for this purpose in both 21 and 2021 and 2022. And, and as you know, the state psychiatric hospitals are a state of Kansas function responsibility. This MOU would not alter that, but it does instead lay out a framework where the Board of County or Commissioners in Cedric County could assist the State of Kansas in the process of locating and constructing or modifying an existing structure to serve as a state psychiatric hospital within Cedric County. The MOU itself would be between the Board of County Commissioners and the Secretary of Keadads. MOUs or Memorandums of Understanding are not legally binding, and as Tim Kaufman described at your agenda review last week, this would be the first in a series of written understandings and agreements between the county and Keadads or the State of Kansas to make this, to effectuate this. Those subsequent documents probably will be binding grant agreements with the State of Kansas, so they'll be a little bit different, but this MOU is essentially a roadmap for what the parties intend those future agreements to look like and how we intend this project to occur. So I'll just, I won't go through all the details in this seven or eight-page MOU, because that sounds pretty dull. Instead, I'll hit the high points, the overarching features. First off, it would propose a, the location and construction of a state psychiatric hospital with at least 50 beds, with the potential to expand to 100 beds, at least 25 for acutely ill or civilly committed patients, and 25 for forensic competency treatment services. Also, in general, the State of Kansas would provide the funding for this. The intent is that this wouldn't involve the utilization of Cedric County funds, that the funding from the state would be able to cover all of this, because again, it is a state function. But the state, but the county staff would be assisting with the process, the Board of County Commissioners would be assisting with this process. There are really three different funding sources contemplated in this. The first two, one is $15 million that is already in the 2023 budget for the State of Kansas, specified for additional state psychiatric capacity, so that's, that's one initial chunk of money. The second would be $25 million, which Cedric County just applied for Spark Committee Grant Funding at the state level. We haven't, as far as I know, we haven't yet heard back from the state on that, but I believe sometime in the next couple of weeks we will, as to whether that's approved. And then the last chunk that's not a given at this point in time would be the potential for up to $15 million in additional funding in the state fiscal year 2024 budget. Again, that's obviously pending legislative approval. The county's receipt of funding would be a condition precedent to us under- The county's receipt of funding would be a condition precedent to us undertaking action under the MOU. The use of funds could be for acquisition of the real property, construction of a facility and improvements, on-call Realtor expenses, contracted architect expenses, outside legal counsel, surveying, plating and zoning costs, project management and oversight services, and also any consulting services that may arise. And the county would have to follow any applicable compliance and reporting requirements. And Lindsey Poverso has spoken to you several times over the last couple of years about ARPA and that Spark money from the state would be ARPA funding. So it would have those requirements attached to it. If there'd be money left over at the end of this agreement, the county would be required to refund that to the state of Kansas. And so the process in this would be, you know, the county would receive funds. We would have an architect develop specifications. Keadads would be involved in that, would have final approval on the specifications for the project. Would also determine a proposed location. Again, Keadads would have final approval on that, but the, essentially the county would be in the position of making a recommendation to Keadads as to where it would be located. After acquisition of the property, the due diligence and zoning and all of those things would have to occur, then the county would go through a competitive bidding process for the construction and modification of the facility based on the plans that have been developed. And Keadads again would have final approval of those, those plans and the contracts that would be entered into. Essentially be a condition, we go out to bid or proposal for that would be the approval of Keadads. Keadads would be assisting with the coordination and construction of the facilities. This would very much be a partnership between county staff and Keadads as it would work through. And then upon substantial completion of the facility, the county would deed the property and the facility to the state of Kansas. The state of Kansas would be responsible for operating it and the county's role in this would be done at that point. So again, this is, this is an initial step, this MOU draft. If you would approve it, we have confidence that Keadad Secretary will sign it based on their representations to county staff. Their, their staff and legal counsel have looked at this. The recommended action is to approve the MOU and I would suggest that your motion also authorize the chairman to sign that. I'd be happy to stand for any questions. And then also Tim Kaufman, Tanya Cole and Lindsey Poverso are also subject matter experts who might be able to help with any questions you've got.
Okay. Thanks for that summary, a good presentation. Commissioner Dennis.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that this is actually on an agenda today. We've been looking at this for six years that I know of, that I've been on the county commission. And it kind of has evolved over time on what our involvement would be in this. It started out way back under the Brownback administration where they, they came down and they were looking at putting out some kind of an RFP for someone to build and operate a regional mental health facility here in Sedgwick County. And at that time, Sedgwick County, we, we supported it and we even volunteered to provide some space over north of the Sedgwick County Correctional Facility that we have available. And as I said, it's kind of evolved over time. I've had the opportunity to speak before a number of legislative panels have been put together. I've gone to, to peek a number of times to testify in favor of, of moving this forward. There's been a lot of questions when we were out at WSU a year or so ago. They wanted to know if we were going to operate it and we said absolutely not. That's not a function of Sedgwick County. So I want to make that clear that we have one of the finest staffs that I've ever had an opportunity to work for, work with. And over the past few years, as this has evolved, we recognize that we have expertise in a lot of areas in the procurement. Joe is going to come up and talk to us in a little bit about some things that we work with, but our procurement folks know what to do. We have expertise in public works that can help analyze this. We've got on-call architects. We've got everything in place that we can help build this, but we're not going to operate it. I want to make sure that that's clear. As we move forward on this, there will be a panel put together of experts that will decide what the next steps are on how that we go through this. The county commission is not going to make a decision until the last step. I get emails a lot of times because people, they've got great ideas. Well, I appreciate those great ideas, but we have not made a decision on location because we, we won't, we'll be the last step of that. A panel will come together and they will make recommendations to us going through all the proper channels. We actually have to stay out of it because ARPA funding is involved. And if, at any point along the line, if we talk to an architect or a builder or anything like that and they have a great idea and we get into any kind of discussions with them, we have to actually recuse them from ever bidding on it because we're going to make the final decision, decision on that. So I want to make sure that as people send us emails or, or try and, and get us to, to listen to their ideas and there's great ideas I know out there, we can't talk to them about it because if we do, they're out of the bidding. So I just want to make that clear that this is actually a long process, six years at least to get to this step, but it's just the first step. There's still a lot of other steps and we have to have the money before we can even go out and, and put out an RFI or an RFP or any of the other documents that we have to put out. This just allows us to start working with Keadads and start trying to move that process forward. So I, I want to thank everybody that's involved in it up to this point. It's a long time getting to this point, but as we move forward and I, I think that we can start getting a little closer. The 15 million is sitting in Keadad's budget today. If we had that, Joe could go to work. The 25 million, we hope to get in the near future. Three years ago, we estimated it was going to cost us $40 million. We've seen that over the last couple of years, cost of building has gone up 30, 40%. 40 million won't build what we're looking at today. And, but the nice thing about it is, as Justin mentioned, there's another 15 million coming out in the next budget that we can kind of prop that up with. Is 50 beds the right number? Can't tell you. I'm not an expert on this. Maybe 100 beds and, and the legislature has spoken. Brenda Landwehr has talked to us about it a number of times, said maybe it needs to be expandable to 100 beds. Again, that's a decision that will come to us at the very end, but it's something that we do have to think about as we move forward. So I am very happy that we're at this point today. This is, this is kind of a relief saying, man, six years we've been working on this. We're finally close to the end. So I, I thank you for bringing this to us today. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Beatty?
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Justin, for the presentation. Brent, I think the question I have is a question of clarity that you might be able to help with. The, I know that with ARPA, that there are some pretty tight deadlines for when we have to get projects approved, shovels in the ground. There's some hard deadlines. And the Spark Grant is, is from, it's a second round of CARES Act funding. It's from the state of Kansas. Do we have similar, if we're awarded the Spark Grant, $25 million, do we have some similar timeline restraints without deploying that and project completion as we do with some of the ARPA funding?
Commissioner Beatty, for the record, Brent Shelton, the deputy CFO. Yes, we would have those same deadlines. ARPA funds need to be committed by December 31st of 2024, spent by December 31st of 2026. So with two tiers of funding, we would look to spend the 25 million before the 15.
Okay. That's helpful. Thank you.
Good question. So with that, I'll make a motion that we approve for, Commissioner Lopez?
Sorry. Thank you. Just really fast, just want to add something. Coming in to this commission a couple of years ago, this was something that I had heard about for a couple of years before that. So I appreciate all the work that the commission did before my time serving here. But I really just want to thank everybody at Sedgwick County that's helped push this along because truly I don't think that this would be happening if it wasn't led by the county. So everybody who's been involved, David and Commissioner Dennis, sorry. I know that you've been a huge part of that as well. And so I just want to thank everybody because this is going to be just enormous for our community if we can get this and the potential that it will bring to Sedgwick County and our region is, is just huge. So appreciate all the work that's gone into this. This is a huge step and I'm really excited to be a part of it. So thank you.
That's good. And also we had somebody signed up to address us. Again, Tony Porter on this issue? Okay. Good morning, Tony. Thanks.
Thank you for letting me be here today to speak about this issue. Chairman Meitzner, Commissioners. I'm here to speak in support of the memorandum of understanding between the Kansas Department for Aging and Disability Services in Sedgwick County for the construction of a state psychiatric hospital. With only two state psychiatric hospitals in the entire state, Osawatomie and Larned, there is a particular need in and around Sedgwick County, excuse me, for services to address serious mental health needs. A psychiatric hospital, as outlined in this MOU, would benefit the criminal justice system and the acute inpatient psychiatric services within the region. This is why both Sedgwick County and the Wichita Chamber's 2023 legislative agendas specifically support a state psychiatric hospital with the bed capacity of at least 50 within the region. The Wichita Regional Chamber of Commerce encourages the commission to approve this memorandum of understanding. Thank you.
Tony, thanks for representing the, the chamber on this and the support. Commissioner Howell?
Well, thank you, Chairman. It's good to know that the business community is all supportive. Thank you, Tony, for those comments. And I'll just say, early on, I wasn't sure that the MOU was the right next step. But I've given my concerns to our staff and they've assured me that this is a good next step. It provides definition on who does what and how we relate to each other. So the devil's always in the details and I think this is a good next step. We have to get the details out. And so the MOU is going to be really great to, to go from talk to action. And so I think this is a good move today. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. I don't see any other comments. Madam Clerk, or I'll make a motion that we approve the MOU as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Being no comments, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner Dennis.
I'm very happy to say aye.
Commissioner Beatty. Commissioner Howell. Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Motion carries. And with, before we get to the next item, Commissioner Lopez needs to leave. She's going to call in, I think, to your phone. It's, we can announce this, can't we, while you're leaving? So Commissioner Lopez is, oh, I can't, I can't announce that? Okay. Oh, well, okay. Then I'm not going to announce anything.
Just kidding.
I'm announcing that Commissioner Lopez is calling in on the phone. Okay, all right. Okay, all right. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. I mean, next item.
Item K, report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, regular meeting on March 16th, 2023.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. The regular meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts resulted in two items that we're seeking your approval. And our first item is the facility MRO supplies and equipment for various departments. And this recommendation is to utilize the Sourcewell Contract 091422WWG at the discounted rates listed. This will go through November 8th, 2026 and have two one-year options to renew. Our final item, waste tire transportation services, the environmental resources. Recommendation is to accept the proposal from Champlin Tire Recycling and it's for the price of $179 per scale ton. Be happy to try to answer any questions you may have and I do recommend approval of both items.
Okay, thanks. Are there any other questions for, for Joe? Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. There's only two items on this, this proposal today. So I have some concerns about the second item. So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion. We split the question. I'd like to make a motion to approve item one and I'd like to discuss item two. So my motion is to approve item one as a first next step here.
I'll second. It's a motion to approve item one only at this point. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Hi, sorry. I hit the wrong button.
Okay.
Commissioner Dennis. Commissioner Beatty. Commissioner Howell. Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, item number two, Commissioner Howell.
So yeah, I, I just see Cindy Lee's in the audience and I know Susan would be here, but she's not able to be here at the moment. Thank you for being here, Cindy. I have had some concerns about this event and I do see there's one improvement in this event versus previous years. They are limiting businesses to one load of 100 tires, which is a step in the right direction. What my concern is this, our, what's our solid waste fee right now? Do we know what our solid waste fee is today? It's about $8 per parcel? I think it's about $8 per parcel, I believe.
I, I think Lindsey's on the phone, Commissioner. Lindsey, are you still on the phone yet and can answer Commissioner Howell's question?
I'm on the phone, but I could not hear the question. I'm sorry.
Yeah. My question is, what is the, what is the solid waste fee per parcel today?
Um, can you repeat that, please?
Solid waste fee currently, Lindsey? And we might have another speaker at the podium that can answer that?
It's about $8.
So when I first became a commissioner, it was $4.88 per parcel. Now it's up to $8. And again, I think these programs are very popular. People don't like to see tires in the ditches or, you know, cast on sides of township roads. It's not just tires, though. It's also furniture. It's mattresses, right? It is a lot of other things, not just tires. And we talk about e-waste. You know, e-waste, a long time ago, when I was a kid, I had this giant TV in our living room. It was about six feet long and I had to kick it to make it work. It was incredibly ridiculously large and it was a tiny little screen. But today our TVs are thin, they're, they're an inch and a half thick and they are, you know, huge and they, they don't have a lot of plastics in those. And so we know when they recycle those, that's important, recycle the plastics. But the bulk of the waste is different than it used to be. I'll just say it that way. And so my concern is this, I, I think that we ought to, this program needs to evolve a little bit. And I've been asking just for my commissioners sake, I don't know, some of the commissioners are new or on the board. I have not shared this in a while, but I, I think we need to, this, this program of solid waste programming should be, should evolve a little bit. And let me give you a couple of ideas. Derby, I live in Derby, Derby has a limb, has a limb and, and tree limb drop-off place for their residents. And some cities, other cities do that same type of thing. If you don't have that resource, most of that limb, most of those limbs end up in the trash. They end up in landfill and it's just really not the best, not the best way to get rid of limbs, but that's what, that's what people do. A lot of times furniture ends up in landfill and, or, or ends up on side of the road. And I don't like that either. I, I guess my point would be this, we're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars for a program. And let me just give you some numbers real quick. If we had the same number of tires come in as we had last time, two years ago, this is just two years ago. And I think we had the event before that was two years prior to that. So this is the third year, third year, third time in a row. It's been two years apart. But two years ago, we received roughly, well, it was, it was 3.6 million pounds of tires in three days. One tire weighs, on average, weighs about 16 and a half pounds. The cost this year is an increase of 51% over what we did two years ago. 51% per ton increase over two years ago. I don't, to me, that's, that's not a good number. And we sent this out to 24 vendors, only got received one, one actual bid. But that, that is, that's not, in my opinion, not a good number. I would almost like to reject all bids and start over. Maybe a different discussion. One of the things I've asked for in the past was the idea of us moving to a shredder and a place where people can bring in stuff year-round rather than just three days. So we have an e-waste event and we, we collect, you know, a whole lot of e-waste and it's fairly, it's fairly expensive to do that. And then we do a tire roundup. We, we on average are spending, based on last year's number, two years ago, $1.47 per tire. Taxpayers are paying $1.47 per tire for someone else to get rid of a tire. When I buy tires, I work with my tire person and I, they take my tires away from me. You know, you say, well, I don't want to, I don't want to pay that disposal fee. Okay. So we put it on other taxpayers. I don't like that. I think it's a, people store tires in the backyards. It's bad for health and environment to have water sitting in tires and mosquitoes and other things that happen there. But the, the best thing someone can do is not to store those tires. So they're going to save a few dollars if they're residents. They're going to save a few dollars waiting for two years for this event to happen. Meanwhile, the mosquitoes are happening. And I think the biggest abuser of this, of course, in the past, has been businesses. Let's just talk about that. We had on average a 74,000 tires per day, on average, last time we did this. 74,000 tires per day. And I, and Cindy, do you know how many people came and accessed that, that in those three days? How many people showed up?
In 2021, we had 2,552 vehicle coming.
So 2,500 vehicles showed up and they dropped off 3.6 million pounds of tires.
Um, so we, we collected 1,800, I'm sorry. Yeah. Eight, um, 1,084,000 tons.
1,835 tons times 2,000 is 3.67 million pounds of tires. Oh, yeah, 1,835 tons times 2,000 is 3.67 million pounds of tires. I should do the math. So, my point is, we have 2,500 vehicles showing up, and they're dropping off enormous amounts of tires. And it's, in my opinion, we are, we're enabling, and I, I'm suspicious that these businesses are charging their clients dollars to dispose of tires, and they just store them until we do this event, and they bring them in. So this limit of one truckload or one load per business is a step in the right direction. But this has just gotten so expensive, and to think our solid waste fee has doubled, essentially doubled, in the nine years I've been a Commissioner. And then what's actually happening is majority of taxpayers, majority of people pay these fees, are not getting to bring their tires in. That's not what's happening. They're paying, they're paying the disposal fee at their tire person, you know, when they buy their tires, they just do it the way I do it. But then we have, then we have a few people that understand how this works, and they're taking advantage of this opportunity. And I just think it's time for us to stop. Let's reconsider how we do this. I don't know how much money comes in that solid waste fee, but it's millions of dollars. I've talked before about doing a shredder, uh, that we could have in place, and probably even take donations because people like the idea of recycling, and you could use the, turn these things that are wasteful into commodities. Tires that are shredded are actually, you can sell them. They actually have a value for sale, and, and actually, most of the things we recycle ends up having, it'll become a commodity. And I think you keep things out of landfill. So the Solid Waste Committee, I've, I've asked them to take a look at this, they've not gotten very far, but they only meet one time a year, so I don't know how they do it. And in terms of us doing this internally, there just isn't motivation to change. We're just stuck in this rut. We do the same thing over. E-waste, tire event, um, back and forth, back and forth, and, and at the end of the day, we're not really getting more efficient, we're just continuing to let this abuse happen. And I think that the solid waste fees have gotten too high. So I, I personally can't vote for this today. I don't want the tires on the side of the road, but we are enabling, and I personally think we're enabling an abuse of other taxpayers. I think this is not the way we should do this. And so I'd like to just stop this, have a different discussion about how to do this year-round for more than just tires, to include mattresses and furniture and some other things, e-waste, and let's change the way we do this in Sedgwick County. I'm not against the fee, I just think the fee's not being used efficiently, and I think we could do better than, than this program. So that's my comments, and I will be voting no. Thank you.
Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. And, um, I am concerned about the number of people that bring in more tires than what they really should be having. People that bring in a couple tires, I can understand that. I'm a car guy. I, I get old cars, and I've got tires that I need to get rid of, and, uh, so I can take them over to Walmart, and they charge me like two bucks a piece, or I can, once in a while, while we have an event, and, uh, we can get rid of them that way. I, I don't, I, I probably will never vote for us to have a shredder, because at the end of the day, you've got to dispose of whatever you shredded. So we're going to end up with the cost there. We do have to protect the environment, and, uh, so I want to make sure that, uh, that we do it right. I still think even 100 tires is too many for any one individual, because if you've got 100 tires, you're not a car guy like I am, because I've never had 100 tires stacked up in my yard. But I do have a couple. So I, I just want to make sure that we don't end up with the unintended consequences of trying to do something different than we've done in the past. And I think we're going to have unintended consequences if we don't pass this. We're going to have tires laying out in the ditch, and our township officials are going to be picking them up, our public works folks are going to be picking them up, uh, we're going to be disposing of them no matter what. Uh, I, I don't want to get to the situation where we've got unintended consequences. The shredder would have unintended consequences. We'd end up having to dispose of that, that, uh, those, uh, tires or other mattresses or anything else you want to run through that shredder at some point. So, uh, I, I, I'd be in favor of reducing the number from 100 down to 50 or something less than that, uh, and moving forward with this, uh, but, uh, I can't just say that, no, we're just going to throw out the baby with the bathwater, uh, because, uh, we, uh, don't, uh, believe that, uh, the people are doing what they should be doing on, on protecting the environment and turning in the right number of tires. So, uh, I will support this right now. I, I don't know if we could modify it to, to reduce the number or not, uh, because I, I don't know of any individual that's got 100 tires.
So I do just want to point out that we are not going to be collecting tires from businesses that are taking money in, um, that are making money off of, um, taking in used tires. And I've also checked with several other, um, tires around, um, town that, like Walmart, for example, they won't take your tires in anymore unless you're getting brand-new tires from them.
Okay. Well, the last time I went to Walmart, I, they did take my tires, and they charged me a couple bucks a piece.
That's nice. I know, I called a couple, and they, they said, like, you know, I think the new rule is that only if you get tires from them, and that's when you have the lower prices, or else if you take them to the transfer station or other places that'll take them, it's pretty, still pretty hefty.
Thank you. Thanks for clarifying that. Commissioner Beatty?
Thank you, Chairman. I, I think Commissioner Howell and Commissioner Dennis are both making interesting points. Uh, we, we need to have consideration, and this needs to be a broader conversation. What, manager or somebody, would, when was the solid waste plan adopted for the county? When was the last time it was adopted?
That, that's a good question, Commissioner, and I did want to address that. So you all adopted this 2023 plan last June. Susan presents in front of you every summer the solid waste plan. I think this is a good conversation that we should have in the upcoming solid waste discussion. Um, and I think what we're trying to get done here today is basically carry through with what the Commission, uh, voted on last summer. So I think these discussions here with what Commissioners Howell's bringing, which is a pretty radical way of, of changing the plan, we have that discussion in June. I think it makes a good staff meeting.
Yeah. So it's coming up again in June to approve for 2024. I think Commissioner Howell makes a good point. I do think there are some abuses that really need to, we need to be aware of in the community. I, I'm, I'm giving a picture right now sent to me of probably 600 tires being piled up, and can only imagine why. Um, and I, but I also agree with Commissioner Dennis that at this stage of the game, with the, with the 2023 plan that's already been approved, that I think we do need a long conversation about how we approach this. So that, that helps with the clarity of where we're at, what was approved last June and what we will be approving again this coming June. So I look forward to that conversation.
Okay. And Commissioner Howell?
So, again, I, I'd like to provide just a few more comments. So the first thing I knew about the tire event this time was I got an email from Susan just a few days ago, and I appreciate the heads up, but I didn't know about this three weeks ago, or two weeks ago, or a month ago. These comments are not, the first time I brought this up, I've brought this up over and over again. And, uh, I have concern about the tires on the township roads. Now, I think we have a program, correct me if I'm wrong, the townships pick up tires in the road, they can drop those off for free, and we cover the cost at the landfill. Is that not true? I believe that is true, but please correct me if I'm wrong.
Not just, um, tires, but anything that they pick up?
Anything that they pick up out of the ditches along, and, you know, I don't want, it's, and it's, and it's obviously illegal for someone to do that, illegal dumping along township roads. But today, you know, even despite this program, I still see tires on the side of the road. I was driving through the Flint Hills the other day, and I saw mattresses on the side of the highway. It, it's just a real problem, and when you start, when you start charging someone 30 bucks or 50 bucks to get rid of a mattress, that's where they end up. We have, we have a tire program, which is great, okay? We're keeping tires out of the ditches. We're not doing anything for mattresses, and they're everywhere. They're driving down I-135, I see mattresses on the side of I-135 going through Wichita. We have a problem. And so the, the idea of the shredder is, uh, to turn these into commodities so they actually become something you can sell, you have people who desire the, the product that comes out of a shredder, becomes a positive thing. I think also, if you had a shredder event, if you had a shredder, uh, uh, program, you could ask people to donate money, you could say, the, the, this is paid for by solid waste fees, however, we would encourage people to donate to that because it's keeping the community clean, it's keeping, uh, we're recycling the things that can be recycled, and people like that. And I think we have to find a way to let people to donate. Imagine people taking off their, taking their tree limbs to the side, we shred the tree limbs, they can be used as mulch, or if you get too many, you can burn them with our air curtain burner, which creates no smoke. We have a way to get rid of that bulk in a way that doesn't make it go to the landfill, but people have no place to take the stuff. And then we have, uh, uh, the tire, the tires, the, the, the waste from tires is, is something you can actually sell. People will pay you for it, but that doesn't end up in, uh, if, if people have a place to take their tires, they might do it. The problem is, as you said in the backup here, if they're having to pay eight bucks or 10 bucks to get rid of a tire, they'll just store it in the backyard, and eventually it ends up inside of a ditch somewhere. Um, and I don't know the urgency of this. This is in April, right now, this is planned to be an April event. If we took three months to talk about this and did the event in the fall, would that really substantially get the thousands of tires and businesses, uh, thrown on the side of the ditches along the township roads? I don't think so. They don't know when the event's going to happen. They don't even know, know, even I didn't know this event was going to happen in April until two days, two or three days ago. So certainly, the, the folks are hoarding tires in the back of their business, they're not going to suddenly take those tires and throw them on, inside the township roads because they didn't get the event in April 2023. I think we should take some time to talk about this. I brought it up over and over. I'm not saying my idea's the right idea, but I think the new commission here needs to have a new conversation, and I just say this program needs to evolve. It's, it is, this is not the way to do this. It's, it's a single problem, it's not comprehensive, it's too expensive, and I think we can do better. So, again, I'll, thanks for, thanks for the chance to speak a second time.
Commissioner Beatty?
Thank you, Chairman. I, I, this, I do agree, this conversation needs to be more, uh, involved. This was actually, this topic came up yesterday at the Union Township Meeting. Uh, it was Park Township, who is next to Bush Landfill, talking about the number of mattresses that get dumped, because you pull up there and you see a sign posted, $35 or whatever it is for, for a mattress, so they just pull off the side of the road and dump it. Um, I will tell you that, that, that many in the private community, my business included, um, you know, over 50,000 mattresses a day end up in landfills across the nation, they're not biodegradable, but 90% of a mattress is recyclable. So we've actually created a program from the private market where we've partnered with the Hutch Correctional Facility, and we haul off 40 mattresses a day that they recycle for us. Um, so there are market solutions to solving some of these problems, which is why this June meeting, uh, this conversation and staff and this June plan, I think, is, really does need to be very comprehensive. I, I think as a staff and as a commission, we should do our homework and do some research as to what these options really are. Um, I, I, I hear what Commissioner Howell's saying, I also hear what Commissioner Dennis is saying on this, and I guess my question is, does, what he just mentioned about backing this up, is that even a plausible thing now that we've publicly said? I, I guess I'm trying to understand what options are available here.
When, uh, it's a proposal, which this is, you have 120 days after the proposal is, is provided, the due date, uh, for them to hold their pricing. The big issue I see in, from a purchasing standpoint, is going to be their being able to stage at the exact same time we delay. They, this vendor may not be the vendor we will have at that time. They may say we do not have the capacity at this time to do it. Right now, they have it scheduled potentially to do it. Also with pricing, they mentioned too, there's been labor problems, transportation costs, so you can probably expect, uh, even from this point, an increase. I'm not saying a 51%, but you will probably get a different price and a different timeframe as opposed to the timeframe we give.
Yeah, just a second. All right. I have a question, and then, but I know that Commissioner Lopez has a question. Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you. Um, I'm in favor of going forward with this today, just because this is something that we discussed last year, and, and we can have this conversation again, uh, for next year. I would think it would be interesting, as we're talking about tires, when I first joined the commission, uh, Susan Hurlewine gave a presentation on what it would take to have a shredder, uh, to have the building big enough, you know, to house that and, and everything that goes into that, and, if I recall correctly, the costs were pretty astronomical, and I would imagine that after COVID and everything else with inflation, that that cost would be even higher today, and it's not feasible, um, for us to do that. So maybe if we do have this conversation, um, again, and we have a staff meeting about what that would take, if we could bring, um, that presentation back, maybe look at what that, the cost would be now instead of, um, you know, years ago, because again, costs have risen so much, but, um, it just wasn't, it wasn't a good fit for the county, it wasn't a good fit for cash fairs because of how, um, expensive it would be and, and the value and investment that we would get from that. Um, so I think it's really important to remember that we have had this conversation before, and it just, it didn't make sense at the time, and I would, I would think that it most likely wouldn't make sense again, but, um, but now we have a new commissioner, I think it's appropriate to have that again, but, um, just for history, we, we have looked into this pretty extensively. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner.
And we actually generated an issue paper. Commissioner Lopez is correct. We can bring that issue paper back for commission and update it.
Okay. So Cindy, I have a quick question. Um, I'm intrigued, so right now, the, uh, as proposed, it's 100 tire maximum?
Maximum, yes, and we've never hit that before.
Can we, um, if, if we amended this to say, like Commissioner Dennis said, 50 tire maximum, does that impact the contract, or does that impact you at all?
No, it should not.
Okay, well, I think that's a, I, I like your idea. So I, I'm in favor of, of amending the motion to limit it to 50 doll, 50 tires instead of the 100, but is there any other comments? Okay, Commissioner Howell?
So just a reminder, so this is 2023, we did it 2021, we did it 2019, and going back beyond 2019, I think the first year we did this was, do you have the data?
Yes.
Cindy, when's the first year we did this?
Uh, 2000.
And then, what was the next year we did it?
2004.
Four years later, and then after that?
2011.
Hmm, seven years later. So this idea of doing it every other year is, 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 it's, it's a, it's a number, okay? We could do it every third year. We don't have to, again, I don't know what's going to happen if we didn't do it this year. If we waited and did this next year, we have, say we have a comprehensive discussion, the shredder's a bad idea, and we go back to tire event, we could still do it next year. It'd be three years rather than two. So I, no, we have to go back and bid it again, I get it, we might not get the same pricing, okay? I don't think this is the right time to do it. This, this again, tell me if I'm incorrect, if we get the same number of tires this year, we're talking about $328,000 expenditure this year. Three hundred, over a third of a million dol, right at a third of a million dollars. And this is going to benefit, benefit 2,500 people who primarily are hoarding tires, not paying fees. It's irresponsible, they're taking, they should show individual responsibility and pay those fees on their own, but we're going to shove that fee over to other taxpayers against their will, and we're going to enable this to happen. I just think it's bad, it's just, and by the way, I understand the concern about the shredder is expensive. I get it, on the front end, it is expensive, but it gets cheaper over time, so you could, uh, I mean, it would be a very expensive sort of a shredder program, no question. But I think in, in 10 years down the road, we'd have a lot more services and a lot less expense to the people. So you have to have a, 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 a long-term view of this, not just a one-year view, but So you have to have a long-term view of this, not just a one-year view, but in terms of one year, we're talking about a third of a million dollars today. I I just think it's too much money. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Any other comments? Commissioner Lopez, do you have any other comment?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion that we approve this with the amend amended to limit it to 50 tires.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any other comments? Being done, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
No.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Motion carries. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Cindy, thanks for your help and being available.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Tom.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioner. Tom Stills County Manager's Office recommending approval of consent items L through S on the general agenda today.
Okay. Any questions on items L through S? I don't see any. I'll make a motion to approve consent items L through S.
Second.
There's a second. Don't see any other questions. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. And Commissioners, at this time, we'll we'll recess the main meeting, the Board of County Commission meeting, and we will open the governing body of the Fire District Number One meeting. So Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Beatty.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Chairman Meitzner.
Present. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
Anybody from the public want to address the commission of the Fire District? I don't see any. Next item, please.
New business, item A, consideration of a grant in the amount of $259,332.39 from the Federal Emergency Management Agency for the Fire Prevention and Safety Grant.
Good morning. You don't look like Chief Doug Williams, but I guess.
No, sir, I am not Chief Doug Williams. I am Brad Crisp. I'm the Fire Marshal. Chief Williams couldn't be here today.
Right, I understand.
Commissioners, we respectfully request your consideration to approve the submission for a grant for the Fire Prevention and Safety Grant through FEMA. The Fire Prevention and Safety Grant intends to enhance the safety of not only the public but also our firefighters with respect to fire and fire-related hazards through the fire prevention programs such as fire investigations. This grant would be used to hire one full-time fire and arson investigator. It is a two-year grant. We do have a five-year, I'm sorry, a 5% commitment from Cedric County Fire District One for those two years if it is approved by you for us to apply, and it is a competitive process, so we would have to be approved to get the grant. I'd be happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Okay, Brad, you you also briefed each of us a little more detail on this.
That is correct, sir.
And so thank you for that. Is there any questions for for Brad? I don't, I don't see any. Commissioner Lopez, do you have any questions on this?
Nope, no, I'm out. Thank you.
Okay. With that, I'll make a motion that we approve the consideration of the grant as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Motion carries. Thanks, Brad, for all your work on this. Good luck. Next item, please.
Item B, a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners sitting as the governing body of Fire District Number One, repealing and replacing Resolution Number 913-2022 regarding the Cedric County Fire District Number One Steering Council.
Okay, good morning, Justin.
Morning, Chairman and Commissioners, Justin Wagner, Deputy County Counselor. As you'll recall, late in 2022, the Board sitting as the governing body for the Fire District adopted a resolution to establish the Cedric County Fire District Number One Steering Council. The time of the formation, the intent behind it was to have a body comprised of individuals essentially with skin in the game, folks who who lived in Fire District Number One, paid taxes on that or owned a business and paid taxes, ad valorem property taxes, to the Fire District. In addition to that, because the steering council's roles would include the expectation that it would opine on a diverse range of organizational matters for the Fire District and their functions, there was an intent, it was expressly stated in the resolution, to have individuals nominated for appointment who'd have a range of skills and expertise in matters such as accounting, human resources, practice of law, business ownership and management. The resolution that's in front of you today, the primary substantive change would be to amend language in the resolution, which indicates that Cedric County Fire District Number One employees are ineligible to serve on this, and would broaden that eligibility to also include both current and former Cedric County Fire District Number One employees and then also current and former employees of fire departments or fire districts that contract with Cedric County Fire District Number One. In addition to that, there are two other minor changes. There are some tweaks to add more precise language to note, to clarify that cities and SCAC and the aircraft manufacturing's role would just be to nominate folks. The language just needed to be cleaned up a little on that. And then also to remove reference to the county's at-large board appointment policy because that's been rescinded as of a month or two ago. The proposed resolution would repeal and replace the prior resolution. That was more of a drafting determination. It'd just be cleaner to have it all in a single document as we're getting this thing put together. And also, the approval of this resolution would require a simple majority vote. The recommended action is to approve the resolution. I'm available for any questions that you have, and Rusty Leeds and also Brad Crisp were also available as well.
Right. Well, thanks, Justin, for this presentation and and good summary that we've looked and understood the environment better on this. And thanks, Brad, and and others that have contributed to helping refine this in as a better resolution. Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So again, I've been involved in this from the genesis, and, you know, we did our best job to write a really great document. I think you did a great job, Justin. Appreciate your good work here. But when you begin to use something, you find out little holes here and there, and this is just a discovery, I think, of an oversight. It makes total sense to make this minor amendment to this resolution. So I think this is a good change, and, Mr. Chairman, I'd be glad to make a motion that we adopt the adopt the amended resolution.
Okay, I'll second that. Any other comments? Commissioner Lopez, do you have a comment? Oh, she's gone. Okay, all right. Don't see other comments, so there's a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks, Justin, for all your work. Next item, please.
Other.
Is there any other business for the Fire District Number One to come for the commission? I don't see any, so we will adjourn the governing body of Fire District One and return to the Board of County Commission meeting. Next item, please.
Legislative issues.
Thank you.
Morning, Chairman and Commissioners, Tanya Cole, Assistant County Manager. For today, legislative updates, this week is the final week for non-exempt committees to hear, discuss, and pass bills to their respective chambers. The House and Senate are then scheduled for all-day floor sessions next Monday through Wednesday. Conference committees will then begin the process of going through differences between those bills passed by both chambers with either minor or major variances in the language. I know that last week while I was out, you discussed the food sales tax bill, so I want to give you an update on that. The House Tax Committee does not appear likely to move the bill forward. They heard from dozens of local governments and economic development organizations regarding what major impact that would have to their budget, so that does not look likely to move forward. House Bill 2021, which is the Juvenile Justice Bill, that is being worked today. And then House Bill 2082, which is our county funds bill, that was being worked yesterday. I might lean on Commissioner Howell when there's a moment. I know that he sent an update, I think it was yesterday, regarding a clear report, so I'm not real familiar with that, so I might lean on him a little bit for that. There are two bills that I want to bring forward to you for discussion, the first one being House Bill 2447. You provided testimony on that on March 10th, and so they have made an amendment to that. And so let me just summarize that real quick. That is an act concerning cities and counties prohibiting the banning of products otherwise permitted under state law. Amendment then including providing for certain exceptions to such prohibition. I'm going to lean on Justin Wagner because I know that he had discussed this with you while I was out. But what I'm looking for here is if there's anything we want to do with Watkins Public Strategy as far as, do we want to weigh in with the majority leader on this before there is a full House discussion, or do we want to have a discussion for Jason and Jessica to discuss with the full House on where we stand, what our position is on this? So I'm going to turn this over to Justin, and then there is another bill that I want to discuss with you after that. So, Justin.
Morning again, Commissioners, Justin Wagner, Deputy County Counselor, discussing House Bill 2447. You'll recall that the bill originated because of concerns that pet land had expressed that a city, and specifically, they mentioned the city of Wichita during the hearing on this, which it's worth noting, the city of Wichita has not enacted an ordinance on this, and I don't think has even taken one up, could adopt an ordinance prohibiting the sale of domestic pets other than from rescue organizations. And rather than having a bill tailored specifically to that topic, House Bill 2447 takes a really broad approach by stating that municipalities shall not prohibit, really, the sales of any product permitted under state law. Now, they did, as Tanya mentioned, at the House committee level, there were some changes made to this bill. I'll briefly summarize those, one of which was to allow reasonable standards for the regulation of alcohol possession. The second was to reg to allow the regulation of consumer merchandise to the extent necessary to comply with local building and fire codes. And then the third change, well, actually, therefore, the third change was not requiring, allowing municipalities still require the licensing or permitting of activities. And then lastly, that the municipalities could still utilize zoning codes. The, there are, I will say, that those those modifications would probably, in my opinion, from a staff level, lessen the concerns that I think you initially expressed in the letter in opposition to the bill. I don't think they removed those concerns. I still think there's a question as to enforceability, if we could enforce any of our codes, to be honest with you, with the current draft of the bill, because that's not something that's allowed, and enforcement is really the tool that government has to make sure these codes are followed. If we can't enforce them, then folks can do what they want with, really, without much more than a recommendation from government. Also, it, there's a lot of undefined terms and really unclear language, and that leads to confusion, that leads to potential litigation and disputes between parties. So I think if this bill had passed in its current form, we'd have a lot of questions of how our codes could apply. I think you'd have constituents that would have questions and concerns, and we'd have probably, presumably, there would end up being around the state some lawsuits that would eventually, the courts and appellate courts may provide some clarity, the scope of this, but it's really not clear today. At that, I would see if you have any questions on that. I'd be happy to address anything more specific if you have it. I will also will say that I did contact KAC and the Association of Counties. They do remain opposed after the amendments to this bill. And part of the concern here, I think, really, the overarching concern is that it's really an erosion of local control. And so we just want to make you aware of it in case you want to take any position on it.
Thanks, Justin. We've had some some discussion on this a little bit, and Commissioner Howell and I have discussed, and maybe sometimes the intent is to to pass something statewide that to fix maybe some problems in the rural areas and then has a pretty drastic impact on on the, so personally, I I think, I'd like for us to just remain silent on on this, and especially, it's below the line still, and I don't know if Commissioners, how you want to feel, or weigh in, or even if we have to take a formal vote, one way or another, since they're looking for guidance on this, since Jessica and Jason are looking for it. So I'm going to, I'll make a motion that we remain silent on that, on House Bill 2447. Any other comments?
I I I would second that, but I guess my, the word I would like to use is neutral. I'd just like to stay neutral on that. Is that okay to the Chairman?
Neutral, okay. That we, that we, so I'll correct my motion to say that on House Bill 2447, we remain neutral.
And I would second that. Thank you.
Motion and a second. Any other questions? I don't see any. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Thanks for the update. Okay, yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. So the the next bill I want to talk about is Senate Bill 312. So this is requiring the approval of the Board of County Commissioners prior to the exercise of the power of eminent domain by certain public utilities. So this is changing a statute, and and let me just go over this. So no electric or transmission-only public utility holding a certificate of conveyance in necessity issued by the State Corporation Commission shall exercise the power of eminent domain unless the Board of County Commissioners, where real property is located, that may be subject to of an eminent domain proceeding, has adopted a resolution approving such taking by such public utility. So we had a discussion with Jason and Jessica on this on Monday, and so basically, what this is stating is that this utility would not be able to move forward unless they have the approval of county commissioners to move forward.
And that's a pretty, pretty drastic power that they were wielding back to us to regulate utilities is what some of our discussion has been. But go ahead, Commissioner.
I just have a quick question on it. Back when we were looking at the possibility of a wind farm over in Reno County, they were going to have to hook into the Gordon Evans plant and come across a large portion of western Cedric County with the transmission lines. So I want to make sure I understand, so if something like that happened, this, they would have to come to us before that they could ever run those transmission lines all the way across western Cedric County?
Commissioner Dennis, yes, that's my understanding.
Okay. Well, honestly, I don't have a problem with that because I had a lot of people that were really mad that they were going to suddenly have transmission lines in their backyard to look at with their million-dollar homes that they'd built. And so I I just want to make sure that, I don't have a problem with taking that on if if that's exactly what is going to happen. I just want to be very clear on what our responsibility would be, and could we stop something like that? Because that would, that would terminate a large project like that.
And Commissioner Dennis, I would supplement my answer. Lynn Packer pointed out correctly that it it would only require the Board of County Commissioners to weigh in if the utility was using eminent domain powers. If they contracted with the property owner and the property owner agreed to it, that's a private matter between the utility and the property owner. But if they didn't reach an agreement, or if they were just otherwise utilizing eminent domain powers, a step in that would be requirement of the Board of County Commissioners approving the matter. So if any of you have any other questions on that, let me know.
No, what I understood at the time was that if that utility was developed across our county line, that they would have absolute right to build their transmission line all the way over to Gordon Evans plant. That received an awful lot of feedback in in western Cedric County. So I support it. Thank you.
Commissioner Howell? Thank you, Chairman. So again, we became aware of this bill a few days ago, and my first thought would be, I think this is actually a good bill. I would also, I would want to support this. But as I've given this more thought, I'm becoming really passionate about this bill. I think this needs to be a supported bill. And if not by the commission and certainly by myself, I'll do it independently. The problem is, there, the hearing, I think, was at 9:30 this morning in Senate local government, and considering the schedule that we're on right now, if it's not out of that committee by Thursday, it's probably not going to go anywhere this year.
Commissioner, the hearing is tomorrow.
Oh, it's, I'm sorry, excuse me, tomorrow at 9:30. I apologize. But our deadline was this morning at 9:30 to submit written testimony. So I I may still try to to submit written testimony personally, and if anybody would like to add their name, certainly, at least one of the commissioner could do that without without boards, without the whole board doing that. There's three of us, and we should do it from the board's perspective. But, you know, we took an oath to uphold the Constitution, and I think the, one of the most basic things in the Constitution is the right to property. And the only thing between a property owner and eminent domain is their elected officials. And I normally, in fact, I was a little surprised to to understand finally that a private utility like Evergy, for example, and again, I like my electricity, I think we have to look at the compelling interest of what they provide to the community. We want to have a balanced, balanced approach to this. But I can't forget about those giant poles 10 feet from someone's door in the middle of Wichita. And I think that if without, without this type of legislation, that type of thing can happen. And I, to me, I don't really know the history of this bill, but that's the problem. The elected officials, the only, the only advocate that people have in government is their elected officials. And whereas without this bill, we essentially have empowered a private utility to do anything they want without, without a cross check. So I think this is a really important bill. I know we're late. I'm going to try to submit testimony personally, and if I don't, if I'm not successful in getting that done, I will probably emailing, I will be emailing the committee members with passion the rest of this today and tomorrow, so they understand my perspective. Even if I don't personally testify as a conferee, so I'm not going to get to do that, it looks like. But written testimony may not be acceptable at this point because we're too late in the game, but I can certainly communicate with the committee members. And I think once it gets out of committee, then we have a whole other opportunity as this goes through the rest of the, rest of the process. So I'm going to be very supportive of this bill. Thank you.
Commissioner Dennis?
Well, thank you, and I appreciate Commissioner Howell. He's been carrying our water all along during this legislative session, and I want to make sure that he has the full support of the Board of County Commissioners as he goes up and testifies on this bill. It's not just Commissioner Howell that is passionate about this, it's the rest of the Board of County Commissioners. Thank you.
Okay. Can I ask a question about, let's talk about, I'm trying to read this bill, and it's going into the public roadway for a public road and bridges, things like that as well?
Chairman, I think the vast majority of that statute's unchanged. The part that Tanya summarized is what's changed. It's a few pages in, I believe, into the bill. So, so most of that statute deals with powers that already exist, for, whether it's for the counties or other municipalities under eminent domain, or in this case, utilities. But what would be different here would be, again, the Board of County Commissioners review, and the requirement for the review for them to be able to utilize these public utilities, utilize eminent domain.
Well...
And I can't recall which section that's in. I think it's B1 and 2, if I remember correctly, of...
That's in the bill today?
Yeah. Yeah, it's on page 2 of the bill, Chairman, and it's lines 11 through 17 on page 2 of that bill. Should be italicized.
Already in the bill?
Yeah, there's just a mention in it. Or statute. Everything's statute.
All right. I would just want, my thought is, do we turn our, is this going to end up turning the county commission meetings into, into public?
I mean, I do think if you had one of these, because there would be, I think there would be property rights involved. It wouldn't be a zoning case, but I think you'd have a due process hearing, so you would provide notice and opportunity. There probably, if this, if this would pass, I would imagine our office, the county council's office, probably suggests some sort of a policy or a process for handling these hearings. And it would probably, if one of these was happening, I would imagine you would have property owners nearby who would be opposed to it, just like you see with zoning cases. You would probably have the utility, more or less, as the applicant. And so it would look a lot like contentious zoning cases, I would imagine. It's just you wouldn't, you wouldn't necessarily have all the same confines as a zoning case, but you would probably be tasked with making a reasonable decision, I would imagine, under Kansas law.
Okay. So I also see line 18 through 20 that says, because the first part is the county commission, and it specifically says, it does not apply to any other governing bodies. So cities, Board of Public Utilities, it all, it all comes to this desk.
That's correct, Chairman. And I think that language maybe is actually applicable to if there's like a city, city-owned public utility. I think that's what it means, but, but I think you're also right, in that, in that the city council wouldn't be hearing these, it would be the Board of County Commissioners only who would be hearing them. So, so you're right.
Well, personally, I think I would rather remain neutral while this goes through, but, and I respect that Commissioner Howell individually, and maybe even Commissioner Dennis could maybe individually say something, but I don't know if we have a, how we feel, Commissioner Beatty. First, I'd, neutral is my, is my thought, but go ahead.
Commissioner Howell brings up a lot of good points. I appreciate the clarification on eminent domain. I would be individually supportive of this, and I had also visited with Commissioner Howell about submitting a joint testimony, he and I. And I think your concerns, Chairman, I think, are warranted, that maybe, maybe it does make better sense if we all would submit an individual, and if it's too late to submit written testimony anyhow, that we could reach out to the committee members and submit our thoughts that way, since there is some reservation. I do plan on doing so, but I plan on doing so via email.
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. I think, considering the calendar and the time, I think to do this individually is the only way really we can go forward, because of Kansas Open Meetings Act, we can't get together and review a letter easily, and it's just so late. So two commissioners can certainly sign off on a letter, and then if another commissioner does it independently, that's okay too. But to do this from the board is pragmatically not really possible at this point with our meeting schedule we have. So I'd like to do this individually, rather than from the board, I think it just makes a lot of sense at this point.
Okay. Okay, we're getting positive nod of affirming from the county councilor, so looks like on this item, individually submitting. Okay. You have any comments? Mike? No?
No, I think sometimes the board may want to consider individual testimony in lieu of the entire board's testimony anyway, because what will happen is, we'll send some testimony up, and if somebody testifies and they sometimes stray away from whatever committee adopts, or the council adopts anyway, so individual testimony might be more effective.
You're talking about me, brother?
Not referring to any county commissioner in particular.
I get what you're saying.
A motion to stray? Okay. We're good proof of you straying. All right. So that issue is, so Senate Bill 312, individually. Okay.
Sounds good. Commissioners, that's all I have for you today on legislative updates.
Okay. Did you have anything, Commissioner Howell?
You know, I just wanted to reflect a little bit. We have a great lobbyist, but he does have a lot of clients, and I speak nothing critical to him in any way. I think they do a great job. But I'm discovering, you know, for, just a little example here, HB 2082, I thought to myself, what's the status? So I went and looked it up, and there were, I think, five or six opponents on the bill. I thought to myself, well, why did they vote no? And one of those was from Sedgwick County, and I thought, did I fail messaging this out in some way? He wasn't on the committee, and so he, I called him up and asked him, what's going on? And here's what happened. There is a thing called CLEAR, K-L-E-A-R, and members of the legislature pay money for CLEAR to produce a report to them, and they grade every bill on four principles. And CLEAR stands for the Kansas Legislative Education Research Report. And so if you're a legislator, you can pay a couple hundred bucks, and then you get access to the CLEAR reports. And they look, and they read every bill. They have attorneys, their job is to read the bills and then judge them based on limited government, individual liberty or freedom, and free enterprise, sometimes it's dubbed as fiscal common sense, and then traditional family values. Well, what happened in this case was the attorney did not understand the bill, I don't think. Again, he's a great attorney, very qualified attorney, but for some reason, they downgraded the bill on limited government. They said this bill's growing government, and which is concerning, because if that bill goes to the Senate with a negative CLEAR report, it's going to kill the bill. So I reached out, and I said, I contacted the attorney and said, we have a problem. Let me explain this bill. And after about 15 minutes of discussion, I think he, the light came on, and he said, we were going to revise that CLEAR report, so it's a positive for limited governments. It's not growing government, in fact, it's the other option. It's about transparency and accountability and government finance management, okay? So we get a positive report, so it'll help the bill pass. But here's the point, I would like it if, you know, I'm doing my very best to track all this legislation. I look it up every single day, and I'll find out what is going on with that bill. I think I've testified on eight bills this year, I believe, and a couple of those a couple of times. I'm, I am passionate about each one of those bills. There's other bills I'd like to speak to. I didn't speak to every bill that's important to Sedgwick County. Most of the things we've touched this year, we're getting what we want. We're moving the ball in our direction on almost everything we've touched this year. So we're very successful. But the challenge I have with this, and Tanya, you do a great job too, it's just one of those things, we're, we're in this stage, in this stage in the session, these balls are moving so fast, I can't hardly keep track of what's going on. And I don't know if you feel that way, but I certainly feel that way. I think we, we almost need to maybe strategically find a way to, to maybe have more, more conversations, more, I hate to use the word meetings, because I hate meetings, but more, more, you know, almost maybe assign a bill to someone to track it every single day, know what's going on. But if something like that happens, and we're not aware of what's going on, we're simply going to lose a bill because someone didn't understand what they're talking about. We actually lost, we've lost numerous bills in the previous years, because if someone got the wrong idea about what a bill did, and they thought we're creating a new fee, or creating some kind of government, you know, growing government in some way, and becoming less efficient or something. So some misunderstanding happens in the legislature, and we lose a bill because if someone didn't understand what's going on. I feel like right now, House Bill 2021 is kind of like that. HB, this is our juvenile justice bill. I'm so glad that bill's getting worked now. If it wasn't for, I don't even know what happened, but I'd say a week ago, that bill was dead. And I think, I don't know if it was DCF got involved in this, or St. Francis got involved in this, but someone apparently made a case, and the chairman decided, the chair lady decided to work the bill. So that bill now seems to be like it's back alive again, but these, these bills, if they were misunderstood, we tend to spend an awful lot of effort to get some policy moving forward, and then at the end of the day, we lose, because someone didn't, someone didn't understand some really critical piece of that bill. So with that, I just wanted to say, I don't know what the answer is, but I think commissioners, if we, I think we know, we're starting to have legislative, you know, legislative strategy 101 type of discussion in January, to kind of refresh, what are the tools? How do we do this? How do we track these bills? And, you know, and I love doing this. I actually really, really like being involved in legislative efforts here. I'm grateful to this board for giving me this opportunity, but I also feel like I'm hogging the, I'm hogging the, the fun, and I don't know if it's anybody else that wants to do this. I'm glad to do it, but I also feel like I'm being greedy by taking, taking so many of these things away from my colleagues here. But anyway, I would like to see, you know, this session's basically over, we only have a few days left. But between now and next year, I'd like to see us maybe have a comprehensive discussion about how to maybe grow up our legislative strategy just a little bit. I keep talking about CAN Focus. I showed Chairman Beatty yesterday CAN Focus. Man, what a tool. If you've not seen CAN Focus, it's incredibly expensive. I know our council's office uses it, but the commissioners have access to CAN Focus. As far as I know, I'm the only commissioner that's using this. Hate to say this, but even most legislators don't know about CAN Focus. What a, what a loss of an opportunity. It's a tremendous resource. But that's the type of thing, if we, if we can certainly have that discussion, I would like to maybe change the way we do legislative efforts in the 2024 session, just a, just a desire of mine. Thank you, that's all I want to say.
Okay. Anything else, Tanya?
That's all I have.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Next item, please.
Committee reports.
Commissioners, anybody have anything to report on the committees? I don't see any. Next item, please. Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Dennis. Okay. Other. Next item, please.
Other.
Other. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. First thing I want to mention is that we had Crime Commission meeting last night, and I was very proud of Sedgwick County with the number of individuals that were recognized from Sedgwick County for the accomplishments to help reduce crime and to protect our community. So I just want to thank everyone from Sedgwick County and everyone that was involved in the Crime Commission for that. The other thing that I do want to mention is that the Sedgwick County Zoo, and it kind of is committee report, but we haven't discussed it at the committee, but the Sedgwick County Zoo is interested in a personalized license plate that shows our new logo that we've got for Sedgwick County, the zoo. And so there's a couple steps that we've got to get through. It needs to go to the legislature, and there's no possible way of getting it to the legislature this year, but we've got time to go through all the steps between now and then. But bottom line is that there is a fee, and we've already got a donor that's going to provide that fee. Takes, I believe, 250 individuals to say that they're interested in having a personalized license plate that is for the zoo. So that's a step that we've got to move forward. But the main thing is that next year, when it comes before the legislature, we need somebody from the House and the Senate to sign on to that. So I'd sent out an email over the weekend to Ty Masterson, Senate President. I haven't really heard back from him, but I also sent one to Chase Blossi, who, Sedgwick County Zoo is in his district, and he said he'd do whatever he needed in order to be able to move this forward. We need, on the representative side, I sent a note to Representative Hawkins, and his district bumps right up to it, but doesn't hit it, but Representative Landwier's district does cover the zoo, and I sent notes to both of those, so I'm hoping that we can get them on board, but it's moving forward. So if anyone is interested, keep your eyes and ears open, because in the future, we're going to need at least 250 people that say that they'd like a personalized license plate for Sedgwick County Zoo. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thanks for that information. Any other comments under other? I don't see any. Next item, please.
Executive session.
Please. Okay. Commissioner Howell?
Mr. Chairman, is 11:25 a good time to come back? I think that's about 23 minutes, is that okay? Okay. Mr. Chairman, I would move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 23 minutes until 11:25 a.m. for preliminary discussions relating to the acquisition of real property, for the purpose of discussing the potential purchase of land and buildings for use by county departments. Either the Board of County Commissioners returns to this room from executive session at 11:25 a.m.
Second? Motion and a second? No other comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Okay. We recess upstairs? Okay. All right. We will return.[1430.58]